Welcome to the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, May 6, 2025. Please join the board in a pledge to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, worthy, under God, indivisible,
liberty, justice for all.
Mr. Canty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format consistent with modifications made to the open meeting law by the legislature of the Commonwealth. Members of the Select Board are joining us here in person at Town Hall in the Great Hall. Members of the Select Board are joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public who wish to attend this meeting may do so by attending physically at the Great Hall here at Town Hall or by joining us over the Zoom webinar platform, the login information for which is included on the agenda that is posted on the Town website. Members of the public may also observe the meeting by watching us on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47 or the local scenes streaming website on YouTube. Members of the public are also reminded pursuant to Massachusetts general law that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. The only recording we are presently aware of is that being made by the local scene. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, we're going to go right to the licenses, the first four.
I'm reporting that I'm recording.
Excuse me?
We are also now aware of a recording being made by Margaret Sheehan.
The first four licenses, then we have a surrender. We'll do separately.
Unless my colleagues have any questions or comments on those four licenses, I would at this time make a motion to approve the four licenses so listed on the agenda as a group.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer, discussion. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Now we have the one surrender.
I would make a motion to accept the surrender of the license formerly owned by Bertucci's Restaurants LLC, doing business as Bertucci's at this time.
Second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney, discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item. Gift of land, five acres.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Lind. I'm the Deputy Director of Planning and Development. I'm here just to give you a brief explanation, and then I'm going to turn it over to Andrea Dickinson of the Open Space Committee to walk you through a short presentation. Tonight, this gift of land is associated with the Tupper Hill subdivision, Tupper Hill Road, and that is a village open space development that was authorized by the Planning Board. With a village open space development, it requires a minimum of forty percent of the property to be set aside for open space. And in this situation, the open space is now being granted to the Conservation Commission. Massachusetts general law does allow the Conservation Commission to accept gifts of land, so long as that's accepted by the Select Board and a town. And so we're just here tonight to ask you to act on that. And I'm going to turn it over to Andrea to walk through some details that the Open Space Committee has reviewed this land. Thank you.
Good evening to the board. Thank you for having me. My name is Andrea Dickinson, and I'm here on behalf of the Open Space Committee. The board has an exciting opportunity tonight to accept a five-acre gift of land being offered to the town as open space by Matt Sheridan and Sheridan Home Builders. The Open Space Committee supports and welcomes gifts of land, particularly when they're significant, which this one is, due to the size and connectivity it would provide with existing town open space and public access via Elmer Raymond Park. After initial conversations with the donor beginning a few months ago, it was determined that the Open Space Committee could add value by sponsoring the gift and shepherding it through the public process. We presented this land gift to the Conservation Commission on April 8, and they unanimously voted to accept it under their care and custody. Jade, if you could go to the next slide. Oh, thank you. Okay. So this slide just walks you through some of the basics. So the donor, as I mentioned, is Sheridan Home Builders, Inc. The acreage is approximately five acres. The estimated value is $250,000. The map here, it might be a little hard to see, but in the bottom right corner where you see the little tree icon, that's where Elmer Raymond Park is. So it's like the southeasternmost corner of Plymouth in Cedarville, kind of behind the little red schoolhouse on Long Pond Road. And so the request tonight is for the gift of land to be accepted by the Select Board and held under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. So on the locust map here, you can see the property situated behind the Tupper Hill neighborhood. As Lauren mentioned, it's the checkered box property here. And the property above's existing town open space, which is the yellow property on the map, which kind of goes along Route 3. And there are actually existing trail linkages on this property that go along through the town property to Elmer Raymond Park, which is actually really exciting for public access because the public can park at Elmer Raymond. It's also really great for the residents in Tupper Hill since they have direct access there. And so the donor gave us the clear title, the letter of intent for the donation, and the site plan, which you should all have in your packets. So the charge of the Open Space Committee is to look for all opportunities for open space protection, which is often a limit, being that we do not have our own budget for purchasing land. The Open Space Committee welcomes gifts of land, and we hope to encourage more in the future. As a committee, we want to express our sincere appreciation to Matt Sheridan and Sheridan Home Builders for reaching out with this opportunity and for having the foresight to plan long into the future and act as a responsible, thoughtful neighbor. So we kindly request the board to accept this land gift into the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. Thank you. And Matt's here if there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Canty?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dickinson. So in regards to, I know Open Space reviewed this, and it also went through Conservation Commission, correct?
Yep. It was voted unanimously by Conservation Commission to be accepted.
Okay. And for the benefit of viewers at home and potential other folks that might want to donate land, in order to accept, town meeting action is not required to accept land that the Conservation Commission approves to accept for open space conservation purposes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So in order, if someone else wanted to donate land, like Mr. Sheridan is doing here, all they would need to do is apply through, they'd go to Open Space, they'd go to Conservation Commission, and if it's approved by both entities, it would also come before us?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And I appreciate, I know that this has been working through the system the last couple of months. I very much appreciate the donation of land by Sheridan Home Builders. And I know that with the new tax title regulations, that the acquisition of further new open space that's not in older tax title purposes may be challenging, at least until that law changes. So hopefully other people will be aware of this process so that more parcels can be preserved in this way. So thank you for bringing this before us.
Thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andrea, thank you for your presentation. I think it's going to be a great addition to that area in terms of open space. I'd love to hear from Mr. Sheridan about the process for him donating this land, so that folks at home know a little more about how that all has worked.
Good evening, Matt Sheridan, Sheridan Home Builders, the proposed donor. To Mr. Golden's question, and then on top of what Mr. Canty just said, to start, Open Space Committee was unbelievable through this whole process. Quite frankly, this probably wouldn't have happened if they didn't get involved and actually see it through and make sure it happened. Patrick Farah, everybody on town staff has been awesome and terrific to deal with. I can't say enough good things about everybody I had to deal with on an individual level. That being said, as a town, this was a lot of work. A lot. And when I say that if Andrea, Open Space Committee, didn't get involved, it wouldn't have happened, I truly mean that. I think as a town, we actually need to look into how to make this easier for people because there's a lot of things that go into this that nobody actually realizes or appreciates until you enter into the process. So I'm not going to get into all the details of it. I'm just going to say this started last fall, and it took us until now to get here. So with that, I hope a lot more people want to do it, but I do think we have to look at ways to try to make the process easier on folks that want to try to get involved and participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments?
Thanks, Matt. Oh, yep. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You were breaking up for a moment.
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Sheridan for the donation. Thank you to the Open Space Committee for shepherding this through, and I hope to see more folks come through. Thank you.
Wish of the board?
We'd make a motion to approve the gift of land, five acres between Tupper Hill and Route 3 South, donated by Matt Sheridan of Sheridan Home Builders.
Second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney, discussion. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
I'm going to respectfully recuse myself from this vote.
And myself, yes. Four in favor, and Mr. Blitzer's recusing himself. Abstention. One abstention. Regulations for the dog park and policy. Thank you, Matt.
Hi, good evening. Nick Fiala, Parks and Forestry Superintendent. Thank you all for your time. I have here tonight the dog park policy guidelines. The Dog Park Committee/Task Force worked really hard for a long time to read probably thirty different Massachusetts dog parks' rules and regs and kind of condense them to come up with this list. And from there, it's been reviewed by Town Council. So I'll read that. I can read the list to you guys if you'd like. Owner/Handler responsibilities and conduct. Only licensed dogs are allowed in the dog park. All dogs in the dog park shall wear current licensing tags from their town of residency at all times. Dog owners/handlers shall not bring any animal other than dogs into the dog park. Dog owners and handlers shall not permit any dogs under the age of six months to enter the dog park. Unvaccinated dogs, dogs in heat, sick dogs, and dogs suffering from parasites are not permitted to be in the dog park. All dog owners/handlers shall maintain voice command and visual contact with their dogs at all times. All dog owners shall immediately leash and remove any dog displaying aggressive behavior, mounting behavior, or behavior that exhibits biting, aggression, or dominant behavior. No owners or handlers shall have more than two dogs in the park at a time. All dog handlers shall immediately remove feces left by their dog and properly dispose of the waste in pursuant to the Town of Plymouth Animal Control Bylaw. All dog owners shall prevent their dogs from digging or excessive barking. All dog owners shall keep their dogs restrained inside the gates of the fenced-in area of the dog park pursuant of the Town of Plymouth Animal Control Bylaw. When entering through the double gates, all dog owners and handlers shall make sure one gate is closed before the second gate is open to prevent dogs from getting loose. And then dog park hours and prohibitions. The dog park is open from dawn to dusk. The small dog area is restricted to dogs under 25 pounds without exception. The large dog area is restricted to dogs over 25 pounds without exception. Children under the age of 12 are not permitted within the dog park. All owners and handlers must be at least 16 years of age. Any guests under that age of 16 must be accompanied by and supervised by a person over the age of 18. No smoking, vaping, alcohol, glass containers, or food of any kind, including dog treats, are allowed in the dog park. All bicycles, skateboards, spiked collars, retractable leashes, e-collars, dog toys, and children's toys are prohibited from the dog park. All use of the dog park is at the owner's and handler's risk. Almost done. Owners and handlers are responsible and liable for the actions of their dogs, including all injuries caused by the dogs under their control, whether on leash or off leash. So, but there is going to be a ribbon cutting, I'm hearing, early June, June 5th. I wasn't sure if it was.
So waiting, just waiting for the signage, and that's very important. So you need that to enforce. And second question, who will be enforcing and?
So it's going to be kind of a mix as far as that goes. I guess a good way to look at it would be, or a good way to think about it would be like human-on-human contact, you know, people fighting over their dogs or something would be the police. Dog bites and such would be animal control. And then if you're, you know, the dog bags for their wastes aren't available, or there's a hole in the fence, or maintenance issues would come to DPW. So very similar to any other public park. It is, that's how that's going to go.
And I hope you don't need this, but will there be any cameras or anything?
There's, that, we've had discussions about that, but we don't have a definite answer.
Okay. I mean, the dog owners, I know most of them are very responsible, and this is a big thing for them that wanted this. I don't have a dog myself, but so hopefully, they police themselves and there's no issues. And it's a great place to meet people, network, and it's a long time coming, so. And this is only one. We talked about two. Is there plans or is?
There's thoughts of incorporating one in the Forges Field Master Plan.
Okay. Good, yep. I know that's coming, so. Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Any other questions? Mr. Canty?
Nick, if one does not comply with some of these rules, like bringing in dog toys or whatever.
Right.
What is the penalty? Would you be no trespass from the dark park or what would?
Well, depending on what, you know, which rules are being broken, we'd have to determine that.
Okay.
So I don't really have an answer for the toys coming in. I'm just hoping, you know, someone says something to them. We're not going to be there at all times, but that sort of thing, I'm sure someone would say, you're not supposed to have toys. Did you read the rules? And they'll get it out of there. And then if there's a human-on-human contact because of that, then they'll call the police.
Yeah, I think the human-on-human will probably take care of itself.
Yeah, right.
One way or the other, but the.
But every, every case would be unique, I guess. Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Wish of the Board?
Are we, are we going to take the Dog Park Committee dissolution separately or are we doing it all at once? It's listed as one item.
Yeah. One vote, Derek? Two votes?
Yeah. Okay. So I would make a motion to approve the regulations and policies presented for the Plymouth Dog Park.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous.
Thank you. Would you guys like to see a couple pictures quickly of the finished product?
Yes.
Or do you want to do your other vote first?
We'd love to see pictures.
Okay, great. Great. So this is the sign. And then, so it's only three slides, but first picture on the left, that's the sign. And then next to that's going to be, that's a bulletin where we plan, I've been working with Patty Meacham on putting directions up there to make gift donations to a gift fund that I have that will help with, could be furnishings, it could be really anything we feel necessary. And then the second one in from the left, that's going to be your main gate. So we call that the airlock area. That's where you would go in with your dog, shut the gate behind you, and then either a small dog on the left or large dogs on the right, that's where you'd enter. Third slide is the, that's just showing the ADA parking and ADA access. We have a lot of benches. I think there's eight benches that we put in there. But the ones that they're showing all the way on the right, those are the ADA accessible benches. Dog bag, waste dispensers. And then for the dog, for the small dog area, which is peystone, and then the large dog area, which is manufactured wood chips, we have ADA accessible dog watering stations, so four watering stations altogether. The two slides on the right just show kind of some of the play area for the large dogs. And then, yeah, it kind of speaks for itself on this one, too. So again, small dog area on the left and large dog area on the right, and just a few more photos of the park. And that's what I got. Anything else, you're going to have to go down and visit and check it out yourself. So, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd make a motion at this time to dissolve the Dog Park Committee, having completed their work.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Mr. Canty?
So I know that this is a committee that was created, I think, in August of 2021, has been meeting for a long time to try and make this a reality. I think the need for it came up during COVID and some of the trying times there. So I, and I know that a lot of people have put in a lot of work for a long period to accomplish this and make this a reality, and appreciate that. So it's being dissolved, not because of the quality of the work, but because of the culmination of their work. It's already been completed, so there's no need for them to continue at this time. If something were to come up, we could always recreate them, but we thank them for their work and their service making this a reality in Plymouth.
Mr. Blitzer?
And I'd like to, if Harry Helm is watching somewhere down in Maryland, where he is right now, I'm sure he's happy this was something that he started, I think it was, what, 20 years ago or something it seems, but probably four years ago. But anyway, thank you for the work everybody did. This is going to be a great, great project.
Any other questions? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Heller. I'm the president of the Southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Alliance, commonly known as SEMPA. I am joined tonight by several board members. Vice President Frank Mand, Treasurer Linda Lancaster, Clerk Hampton Watkins, and Director Doty Frank. We are the SEMPA Board or part of it. I'm here to address several false and troubling statements made during last week's Select Board meeting. Chairman Quintle wrongly suggested that SEMPA had either dissolved or changed its name to Community Land and Water Coalition, and that under this supposed new identity, we had filed a lawsuit against the town regarding the development at Hedges Pond Road. He went on to imply that SEMPA, under one name or another, had benefited from a sweetheart deal to lease town-owned building at 158 Center Hill Road, only to then turn around and sue the town. Member Steve Leiden then falsely claimed that we had changed our name from the Pine Barrens Association, were illegally occupying the building, and should be arrested. Let me be absolutely clear, none of this is true. SEMPA has been an active 501(c)(3) nonprofit in good standing since 2013. We have not changed our name, and we have never filed a lawsuit against the Town of Plymouth or anyone else. Our lease for 158 Center Hill Road is valid and fully in effect. It was renewed in December 2023 for a 10-year term and was signed by most of the current Select Board, including Chairman Quintle, Vice Chair Canty, and members Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Blitzer. Before moving to Center Hill, SEMPA leased a town-owned building at the Russell Mill Preserve on Long Pond Road, starting in 2024, I mean, sorry, 2014. In 2018, the town manager at the time, Ms. Oregi, invited SEMPA to relocate to the Center Hill Preserve, telling us that the selectmen were considering tearing down the building if she could not find a tenant, and she thought that would be a terrible thing to happen. Since occupying the building, SEMPA has undertaken numerous initiatives that have directly benefited the town. We secured a U.S. Forest Service grant for hazardous red pine removal in the town forest and habitat restoration at Tidmarsh Wildlife Sanctuary.
How much more time do you need? You have your three minutes.
Another minute. I think I deserve this.
One more minute?
If you don't. Or I could hand it to another board member if you like.
Yeah, give you a minute.
All right. Thank you. We led a municipal vulnerability preparedness action grant to study saltwater intrusion risks for the Town of Plymouth. We are partners in the America Beautiful Grant, run by Mass Fish and Wildlife at the moment, to restore century bog and protect the Pine Barrens complex. In 2020, we initiated work on a forest legacy grant that could have brought tens of millions of dollars to help purchase the Holtek property, intended as a partnership with the town. Holtek ultimately withdrew, but the record reflects our intentions. As for the so-called sweetheart deal, the Center Hill building sat vacant and neglected for two years before we moved in. In our first week, we had to close the unsafe decks, repair a failed oil furnace, and restore the chimney. Since then, we have paid over $10,000 annually for rent, utilities, insurance, and maintenance. In 2024.
You need more time? That was a minute.
I need one more minute, please. Or I could hand this to another board member. If you want to start the three minutes over, I'm happy to remove myself from the podium and let Frank take over if you like. He's vice president.
You have a minute.
Okay. In 2024, after receiving two grants, we completed over $100,000 in upgrades, including replacing the oil and propane heating systems with two heat pumps, modernizing the lighting throughout the building, restoring the decks to meet current codes, and replacing rotted windows and sliders. What I am most proud of is the installation of a water testing station, allowing us to monitor pond and drinking water quality for the community. As a condition of our lease, we are required to submit an annual report to the town, which we submitted on December 11, 2024. It is difficult to understand how such basic facts about our lease, our name, and our work could be so completely misrepresented by members of this board. We respectfully request that the Select Board formally acknowledge the factual inaccuracies presented at last week's Select Board meeting and ensure the public record is corrected.
Good evening. My name is Meg Sheehan. I'm here to speak on the same topic because I was similarly maligned and insulted. I want to clarify who I am and who my organization is and to also request an apology. So to clarify, my name is Meg Sheehan. I'm an attorney. I'm a graduate of Plymouth Carver High School. My family has been in this town for five generations. My great-grandfather started a business that employed thousands of people with good-paying jobs and benefits. Perhaps no other family in the history of the town has consistently, over 100 years, given back to the community. I played a leadership role on the Boys and Girls Club. I have been instrumental in donating my time to conservation in this town. We have supported the Thanksgiving Day Parade for over 25 years with free space. We fund concerts on the waterfront. I could go on and on, with donated hundreds of acres of land to conservation in this town. All my life, since the time I was 13, growing up on Warren Ave, I have worked for the public interest and for the common good in this town. Today, I am fortunate enough to be able to represent people who cannot afford the $1,000 an hour lawyers who come before the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals to get their development permits. I donate my time and my expertise to represent people in environmental justice communities across Plymouth County. For the second time, and this happened two years ago, I was dragged into a political fight with the former chair of the Select Board. And at that time, I wrote a letter to the Select Board explaining the falsehoods in those attacks about me and my connection with the Southeastern Mass Pine Barrens Alliance. So this board is well aware that I am involved with and co-founded Community Land and Water Coalition. It is not the Southeastern Mass Pine Barrens Alliance and never was. Community Land and Water Coalition does not have and never had a lease at Center Hill Preserve, nor was it ever a subtenant, nor does it today occupy the building or use it for a mailing address. We have our own office and our own mailing address. And who are we? We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) that I co-founded as a result of my life's work in 2021 in response to the needs of this community and constant requests to me for assistance. We provide free legal and technical advice to community members so they can understand how to participate in the democratic process.
Sheehan, you have three minutes.
I'm almost done.
How much more time do you need?
One or two more minutes. I want to be clear that this is a nonprofit organization that engages in many types of activities: public education, the Herring Fest, educating the public about how, again, to participate in the democratic process at Town Hall. I would expect that the town would be appreciative of these efforts to enhance public participation in the community and not constantly being attacking me and my organization. Our mission is to protect, preserve, and steward the land and water resources of Southeastern Massachusetts. We have over 3,000 people on our subscribers list and hundreds of members. We invite everyone to join, and you can find us at communitylandandwatercoalition.org. And again, I would request that I not be dragged, or my organization, into political attacks such as what happened here last week.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Okay. Town managers, report?
Great, thank you. Since we're talking about falsehoods, I do have something I'd like to update the board about. Regarding 71 Hedges Pond Road, a complaint was filed by the Community Land and Water Coalition that went to the Attorney General's Office. This was a few weeks back. The State Attorney General's Office responds to all complaints and engages in due diligence regarding these types of complaints. The state spoke with the town twice, specifically Town Council and other staff members. The town cooperated and provided the requested information and documents per the request of the AG's office. The state has not taken any action against the town, and the state did not represent that they would be taking any action against these alleged Article 97 violations by the Community Land and Water Coalition. The state thanked the town for its cooperation and said they would be taking no further action at this time. And those were regarding the falsehoods alleged by the Community Land and Water Coalition.
Thank you.
Moving on to other items to report to the board. As you know, the town has a first writ of refusal 120 days for 450 Little Sandy Pond Road, which is the Atlanta Country Club. A letter was sent last week by Town Council to the seller's attorney outlining the deficiencies in that purchase and sale agreement. We have determined that that PNS is invalid, and we notified the seller's attorney as such. At this time, we have spoken to their attorney. We expect them to revise a purchase and sale agreement, and at that time, the 100 time, the 120-day writ of first refusal clock will begin once again. So we'll keep the board posted on that. Moving on to some good news. The governor will be in town this coming Thursday. The, she will be at the Cal. We don't know exactly why she's coming, other than we've been told that there's some exciting news to announce regarding Older Adult Month, and the governor wants to do that, again, at 10:30 a.m. at the Cal this coming Thursday. So we're looking forward to meeting with the governor. Regarding the Moreham Park upgrades, so as you all know, last year, through the hard work of our state delegation, we received an $18,000 earmark. And because of this earmark, we've been able to install new toilets and new sinks at Moreham Park. So that'll be ready for our park season this coming summer. Speaking of this summer preparation, on May 17, the Taylor Ave bathrooms will be available for public use. That is at White Horse Beach. So again, May 17, the Taylor Ave bathrooms at White Horse Beach will be available. There are a number of roads, as you know, we have about a little north of $7 million in roadwork that's going to take place this, this coming paving season. And so we're going to start that, the assistant DPW director will be in front of the board at the end of this month to give a comprehensive update to the board regarding the roadwork that's going to ensue this season. However, work will begin before that update. So I want the community to know, and certainly the board, to know of some milling and overlay that's going to take place. We're going to post this on the town website, so folks can avail themselves to that. But just so I'm clear, Justine Road, Justine Ave, Dorothy Drive, Maureen Way, Sandra Way, Linda Lane, Nancy Drive, Bonnie Briar Drive, Stargate Path, Lucy's Path, and Oak and Bucket Lane, those roads, we will begin the milling overlay process next week. So we want folks to be aware of that. We will certainly put the digital signboards out there to let those roads know that construction will begin. Speaking of construction, as you all know, the Safe Harbor Building that's located on Union Ave has received its demolition permit. We're expecting that building to be torn down in the next four to five weeks. So they're going to be doing some hazardous materials removal first, and then tearing that building down. The fire chief reported this morning that the new automated dispatch system is now live. This is a project that the fire chief has been working with the sheriff's office for the last couple of years on. This automated dispatch system will allow dispatches to continue to dispatch apparatus and responders in a much more efficient, efficient fashion. And so we're excited to report that to the community. Speaking of fire, as you all know, there was a major wildfire last week in Bourne. The town, through mutual aid, provided five apparatus, and were able to assist in putting that fire out. So I want to thank the fire chief and his staff for providing that assistance to one of our neighbors. And then I'd like to report that the police chief notified us this morning that the new police substation, which will be located at the PGDC building over here on North Street, is expected, they're moving in now, we're expecting that building, that substation, to go live next week. I know there's a lot of work by the board members, in particular Mr. Blitzer, in order to make that happen. And the chief is looking forward to having police officers at that location throughout the summer months. Early voting will begin tomorrow. So early voting will take place Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday of this week. It'll be during town hall hours. On Saturday, it'll be from 9 a.m. to 2 p.m. We will take Sunday off and then come back Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week. This is for early in-person voting. Again, those three days will be during town hall hours. And then I just want to report that because of last November's election, we were able to seek reimbursement through the state, and we were able to get reimbursed $95,000 for the work around early in-person voting and mail-in voting during the November elections. Pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for the town manager? Mr. Mahoney?
Derek, what building is being taken down?
The Safe Harbor Marina Building on Union Street.
Okay, sorry. Yep, got it. All right. Yes. So, the governor, it's at 10:30 Thursday at Cal. How long is her stay?
She's going to be here for about 60 minutes.
60?
10:30 to 11:30.
So I will do what I can to get there. I'm not inclined to take the day off. So, I'm assuming you're going, correct?
I will be there, yes.
And you're going to be there. Okay. And who else is going? You bring another town staff with you?
Certainly Commissioner Bratty will be in attendance, and other Cal staff.
Okay. So you know where I'm going with this? Talked to the governor.
Yes, yeah.
August to September. Asked her if she would come down and have a private meeting with the board, just as her predecessor did eight years ago. She assured me that she would, and obviously that hasn't happened yet. Now, obviously, I could be yesterday's news in about 11 days. But win, lose, or draw, I would like to think that Ms. Healy can come down here and whoever is occupying these seats can meet with them for 45 to minutes to an hour, so we can talk about what works and what doesn't work for the town of Plymouth. And obviously, if I don't work on Thursday, I'll be there, and I will communicate that to her directly.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Charlie? No?
No, I just said new business.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Sure.
New business? Charlie?
On my way in, I bumped into Roxanne Whitbeck, our veteran's agent, and she informed me that, that fire that we had the other night up in the Mobile Park was a 94-year-old veteran. And he's been displaced, and the Volunteers of America are working together with Roxanne to help this gentleman, because I asked her if there's anything we can do. So they have him in one of the motels for now, and they're trying to find him a place, a permanent place to live. So he's 94, he's a veteran, and they're going to be looking for help. I mentioned that to talk to you, and we would get involved if they do a fundraiser, whatever they're going to do. So I just want the community to be aware that that gentleman is being helped out because of the resources that we have in this town. The Volunteers of America, what they do down there on, the Citizens Bank with their offices, it's just great work they're doing. And this is a situation where they stepped right in, and they're going to take care of him. And also, I'm sure the VFW, the Legion, everybody's getting involved in it. So hopefully, they'll advertise it a little bit, whatever they do, fundraise it. But I definitely am going to support it. And I know, I'm sure the rest of the board will, too. So anyway, that's it. I just want to make sure the community's aware of this.
Anything else on the new business? Letters? Old business? Mr. Mahoney?
I just want to say that I was able to get to, there was a retirement party at 11 Lincoln Street, Mr. Chairman, last night for Jim Sorensen. So I went to that on my way up to Route 3 to Masfield last night. But I was able to stop in. He served in, I don't know the full resume, but 35 years in the Plymouth School Committee. I think that says, speaks volumes. And I just wanted to wish him, Mr. Sorensen, best in his retirement.
Absolutely.
Dr. Sorensen, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? See you none. Motion?
Make a motion to adjourn, having completed our business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.